Bill, can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you.
Can you hear me, Dave?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I could call that. Thanks. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Brad, if you don't mind, would you lead us on?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of this state, one thing is true, under God, and in this world, we're liberating and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. If I could just ask everybody to put their phones on vibrate if you've got to take a call, leave, just go outside, either door, front or back. As far as emergencies go, if we do have an emergency in the building, we ask that everybody go out to the front and the back, meet across the street on the church sidewalk. So we're far enough away from the building if need be. Obviously, there's no smoking. I think that's about all I need to say, pretty much. We'll keep our comments to a few minute minimum. If we, you know, when we open a public hearing for any of the projects, a couple of minutes. And we won't time you, but we'll ask you to be courteous and keep the comments brief and concise. We won't have any back and forth banter when there's not a question and answer ceremony here today. We're not doing any of that. We're just going to listen to a presentation that's given to us. And as far as the public hearings go, if you have a comment to state on any of the particular items that are coming up for a resolution, just state your case. We're not going to, we could have the customer, I'm sorry, the applicant answer to it, but it's definitely not a back and forth comment session, for sure. We'll keep it short. That being said, if I could have somebody make a motion to approve the minutes for February 20th, 2025, and February 27th, 2025? You got a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Scott, I just want to confirm that the changes I submitted to Sarah are included in the latest drafts.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. And Sarah, are we good? Thank you. And any abstentions?
I'm going to stay. Do I need to abstain, Paul?
You really can't vote right now.
I'm not having any from the minutes.
You're, but, yeah, you can't vote, but you can observe, pretty much, as a member.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And tonight, John will be voting if needed. John dispenses. First up is the informational meeting from Seven Touches LLC. It's a site plan for 3555 Route 9W. If you'd like to come up, introduce yourselves, and the project.
Good evening. I'm Patty Brooks. I am assisting with the presentation of the project this evening.
I am Brandon Gallarenzo, project manager for this project.
I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. We're the site civil engineer.
Hey, Dave, do you have what they have on their, on the easel? Well, do you have something we can at least look at while they're talking a little bit? Dave's back. It'll, it'll help a little bit, just anything you have. It's.
Yeah, this is actually the site plan with the landscaping plan proposed on top of it, so. Welcome, everybody. I know that a presentation was previously made.
We can't hear you, Patty.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I know that a public hearing was, a public information meeting was previously held. How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Was previously held on this project, and based on comments that the applicants have received, they've made substantial changes to the project. With that in mind, we wanted to make another presentation this evening. It's just a public informational meeting. The applicants continue to work with DOT, with the Water and Sewer Department, with the Fire Department. So again, the purpose for this evening is to kind of review what the changes have been since you last saw the plan and as we move forward with the design. So as you can see, we have four mixed-use buildings on Long Route 9W. There are approximately 14,600 square foot footprint per building. About 2,500 square feet of each of the buildings fronting along Route 9W will be for storefront commercial. There are a total of 140 units spread across the four buildings. There are a total of 81 bedroom, which breaks down to 56 regular one-bedrooms and 24, that's one bedroom with a den, 56 two-bedrooms and four three-bedroom units. The housing was relocated away from Roberto Avenue, and now we just have a clubhouse proposed along Roberto, combined with a controlled access to the bottom parking lot. We're still working on determining what type of control will be used in that access and what the limitations on it will be as we're moving forward with the project. A robust landscaping plan has been put in place along Roberto Avenue. There were some comments about retaining as many of the large deciduous trees as possible along Roberto, and that has been, the surveyor went out, located all of the trees along Roberto, and they have been incorporated into the landscaping plan to the greatest extent possible, the ones that were worth saving. Other comments that we received from the planning board last month were addition of a bus, bus shelter along Route 9W, concern about delivery trucks and maybe having an Amazon locker somewhere on the site, and making sure that there are ample bike racks on the property. This plan is a view of what it looks like from the interior of the site looking out towards Roberto, and this is the clubhouse. Obviously, the trees along Roberto Avenue, the initial trees that are going to be planted will be eight to 10 feet in height. They are rapid-growing, arborvitae, giant thugas, something or another. So this is at the mature stage of it, but that is what the building will look like from the interior of the site. This is what the initial plantings will look like from the view on Roberto Avenue, and this is what the landscaping plan is with the height of the trees as they will be initially. And then, of course, you can see the apartment complex in the back. This, again, is a view from 9W, looking down the site with the four buildings, and we've incorporated in the gateway requirements as far as streetscape. There will be a lot more green space on the property than there is right now. And there's, again, you'll see on the next plan especially the landscaping plan. Well, oh, this one is the signage, the entrance of the plan. I think we showed that one last month, too, right? And then the landscaping plan with each of the individual plantings detailed. What else we have hiding in here? So a lot of the trees that are going to be planted in the parking area are either the rockets or the gold spires, as well as the green giants, so that not only will you have the evergreens, but they're replanting some deciduous trees based on comments that we had received previously from the neighbors. So I think that pretty much covers the majority of the changes. And the lighting plan, we're finalizing at this point in time. We do have a detail for the lamps that will be in the parking lot area and beyond what's in the parking lot area. They mostly will be small bollard lighting for lighting walkways.
Did we, one quick question, did we address the, I'll call it gated entrance on the Roberto side?
That's, we, we have agreed that it's going to be a limited access. We wanted to have continued discussions. I know the, obviously, Fire Department has concerns about making sure if it's gated that they have adequate access to it.
Sure.
Something more than a Knox box, or better, I should say, than a Knox box. So we're looking at gates that can be opened more easily or more accessible, electronic. And then the question is, again, limitation on the access to just deliveries, to just residents that have an electronic access through that gate.
Yeah, that's our purpose, is to make sure it's not thoroughfare from a shortcut, that's all.
Correct. So right now, they're still trying to work on what the mechanism will be to make sure that that gated access is limited access. And again, that's one of the reasons we're here tonight is, if, you know, to listen to suggestions on, on how to limit that.
And one other question was, I thought, I could have been, I could be mistaken, trust me, I do this with the county, too, so I might have said it there, but that property having the bus shelter down by Roberto for children getting a bus or something of that nature, because we, probably at 9W, I don't know if that's going to be a, a really good spot to have a bus shelter for kids getting a school bus. Agreed?
Yeah, where we, along 9W, there will be a bus stop for UCAT. We spoke with UCAT about that. The bus shelter for the children would obviously make more sense along Roberto, which is residential. Keep them away from the highway.
Yeah. So is there anything, any other part of the presentation that needs to be spoke about? Spoke of?
Yeah, again, the technical parts as far as fire, water, sewer. Dan Kohler is working with the agency as far as that, DOT as well. So this evening, it was more to discuss with the general public what they're, or to hear, to listen, not to discuss, to listen.
Right.
Take comment.
Some of them do have comments, I'm sure, so I'm going to address that now and see if you guys can help with those. So is there anyone from, from the public that wants to speak to it? Yeah, what's your name, sir? And we may ask you to take the microphone for a quick second. It's just so the people in Zoom land can hear you, too.
Sure. Hello, my name is Justin Cretelli. I live on 3 Roberto. I'm directly across the street from the proposed access point. You guys are going to build where you're going to build. That's fine. My issue is safety of my children and the other kids on the block. You're going to have, how, about how many people in these apartment buildings total, did you say, roughly?
140 units.
Okay, so let's say 70 cars, which is probably going to be more. So now you're going from a block that has maybe 10 cars on a daily basis traveling up and down that block. You're going to do five or six times the amount of cars on that car, on that road that barely fits one car down now. I mean, you, you guys are going to build where you're going to build, leave the access alone. Why do you need to come down Roberto? Why do the people that live there have this big beautiful entrance off 9W? They should be able to just come in 9W. They shouldn't interrupt our lives anymore. So that's, I, I really would appreciate if there was no access off of Roberto. If the Fire Department and Police Department need access, that's understandable. They should be the only ones that should, in my opinion, should have access. The road's one and a half cars wide. How are you going to fit all of those vehicles in and out? And you're going to leave it for people double parking on our street, cutting through the woods to visit their friends, to avoid traffic on 9W? I think there should be a fence along with the trees along Roberto. Because you're going to have people avoiding 9W, coming down Roberto, double parking on the street, U-turns in our lawn, U-turns, U-turns in the driveway. So I think you guys need to maybe leave Roberto out of it. And you guys are going to build where you're going to build. I wish you guys a lot of luck. My main concern is my family and the people on the street. So I hope you guys take that into consideration and leave Roberto alone and move your access.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? State your name. Thank you, Patty, for emceeing this.
Louis Ostrawski, 5 Roberto. I live right next door to Mr. Cretelli. I'm going to echo what he just said, you know, I have two young kids of my own, you know? And I understand you, you guys want the access, you know, it's a beautiful site plan, it looks good, but you guys may have done a traffic study on it, you know, you're going to cripple the amount of cars that you're going to have coming through there, you know? Leaving it for emergency vehicles only, fire, EMS, police, plus the, the gate is probably the best way to do it, and making sure that it's not bypassable via, you know, people wanting to bypass in to double park on our road, you know? I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm all for being emergency access only. I'm so sure Chief Miller is aware of, too. And that's all I have to say. Deliveries as well, yes.
No, I wouldn't even like deliveries access. I yell at the Amazon guy all the time.
Okay, we, we're going to go to the next person. We got it. Thank you. Is there somebody else who would like to speak? State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Cindy Call. I'm just really concerned about the traffic on Route 9, 9W. And right now, when I try to get out of my, you know, I'm, I'm on Hasbrook Avenue, and I try to get up Van Wagner to get on 9W, the traffic is backed up, you know, past the bridge, past the first light, past the second light. What, what's the plan for the traffic?
We're not answering, we're hearing tonight.
That's, that's a huge issue.
Say, state your name, please.
Hi, Jeff Rieger, 10 Hasbrook Avenue, so just, just one street over from Roberto. You know, I echo what they said. I think the access should not be used on Roberto. If it is, if that's what's decided, will there be traffic calming, implementation, speed bumps? Anything to, you know, slow down traffic, calm it, prevent double parking, prevent people parking on the shoulder, any of that? You know, will we update the street to, to help, help with that? And in addition, on Van Wagner, just, yeah, that, if that's going to be the access out, making, trying to go north on 9W from Van Wagner, very tricky. And so a lot of people pull through the Fire Department parking lot, and a lot of people have trouble making a left to go north on 9W. So, and then just this, you know, people are going to use the suicide lane, the middle lane, coming in and out of the 9W entrance. That's going to be a mess. If there's not a light there, we're going to see multiple traffic accidents a year. It's just a fact. That's, it's not going to be doable with what we see in the renderings. So just would like to see a traffic plan more so than what we have now, and especially traffic calming on the smaller side streets, even on Van Wagner, just something. Because I see people already going 40 down like Van Wagner. So that's going to just increase if people have this rear access flying through, getting on Roberto, going through the gate. So it's, it's just going to bring more chaos, so I think we need to see a more comprehensive traffic plan.
Is there anyone else? Okay.
Steve DiLorenzo, Highland Fire District. I don't know what a limited access gate really means, Patty. Our biggest concern is obviously if that gate is left open, you've got 140 families or whatever coming through that parking lot, coming out that road and through our parking lot to get downtown, to go wherever. We have a significant amount of people going through it now. I've spoken to the Police Department, and they feel the same way. It's an emergency services building, police, fire, and ambulance, and we have to make sure that we have access in and out. And for our members, we're volunteer, and all the members are instructed to come to the firehouse to get their equipment and get their trucks. So at the time, we just don't need the extra traffic, and I don't know what a limited, I just don't know what that really means. Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand. One of the things you're concerned about is people going through your property. Okay. Okay. And then with regard to the limited access, there are multiple ways to accomplish that? And that's why I said that offline, we're having conversations, again, with the Fire District, the Fire Department, and to come up with a plan.
With the bus shelter, you said beyond Roberto, right, for the children that are living, is that what you said?
The plan probably will be to put that bus shelter. No, no, no. Yeah, the gate is quite a bit further off the road as well, so.
And didn't we discuss not two-way traffic for that? It would only be one way in.
Yes, only going into the property, I believe, is what we were talking about. Or at least what was requested. Remember we mentioned that, just having access in, coming out? Say again? Thought it was out? No, it's got to be in. We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Eric Hazelton, 120, I've been here to have, we live near the Tilsen intersection, so we haven't been here for any other planning meetings, but this is mainly a question. So if it's a one-way in, where is that traffic coming off of 9W to Tilsen?
It would be coming off.
Would they go through the hamlet? Or like, how, how would the mainly people be, are they, is it, how they get, getting through there? So it's out or in?
This would be two-way on 9W.
Two, oh, that's not, I'm looking at it backwards.
On Roberto, it's still up for discussion. Again, that's, you know, we're still discussing that with the planning board. We wanted to, again.
There's just, yeah, just, you know, I just want, I guess, the commonest also to consider the bigger traffic flow. Yeah, because Tilsen and the intersection.
Right, because then they'd be going down.
Just one, one person at a time, if we could. Okay, well.
Well, something's captured.
Yeah, again, there is a traffic engineer who has prepared a traffic study. Yeah, again, there is a traffic engineer who has prepared a traffic study for this site. We will go back to him at this point. He's the one who is the expert on traffic and both externally and internally. He'll be able to provide the numbers or already has, I have not reviewed them as far as where the most of the traffic is going to be coming from, where it's going to be going, when it leaves the site. So all of that is part of the traffic study, which has been submitted to the board and is public record for anybody to think.
You say there were 140, Bruce Epperson, 314 Valley Road. You said there were 140 units in this development. How much retail?
About 10,000 square feet.
ITE Trip Generation Manual approximately has eight one-way trip-ins for multifamily units per unit. At 10,000, you're generating about 10 trip-ins for each thousand square feet. So you're generating easily on a, on an average day, people were talking about perhaps tripling it. It's well beyond that. You're generating something on the order of 550 to 600 inbound trips and 600 to 700 outbound trips per day. The problem is not one of the traffic study or traffic patterns. The fact is the scope of the entire project is inappropriate. The buildings are too high for the site. You have the two banks of buildings backing up on each other, tenement style, no more than 30 feet apart. You probably have an impervious service ratio on this site, well over 95%. Your landscaping is minimal at best. Frankly, is your too many units, too much parking, too little landscaping, all on a site that's too small at the wrong location. The project needs to be rethought out. It's too big, too much on too small a site. Go back, rethink it, chop down your number of units, chop down your retail, readjust your buildings, redo it from the ground up.
Bruce Epperson, and I'm sorry, what was your address? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Well. Anything from staff? Any questions? Okay, Dave?
I got nothing. Yeah, just a quick comment. Almost all the things you saw tonight that Patty and her team talked about are on the town's website. If you go to the planning board, under departments, planning board, on the left-hand side, 3555 Route 9W, there's a drop-down arrow, just click that. All the maps will, you know, all the links will pop up. You can look and see if you have, want to look at them a little closer. I have a hard copy pronounced, they're available Monday through Friday, eight to four upstairs in the building department. You can also email me, dbarton@townalloyd.com, as some of you have already done that. I've been back and forth with some of you. So I'm happy to discuss, happy to share maps and comments. Just, I, I think I've been relatively responsive and the board is concerned about your concerns. So please, you know, keep engaged.
Sure, and sir, go ahead.
Yeah, all, all I was going to say was that we'll send you everything that was presented tonight so that you have the fresh copies of that. And then you can upload them to the site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you to the public for coming out and thank you to the applicant for expressing what it is they're planning on doing and for hearing the public, for sure. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is, I'm sorry, Jake, John Jacobs, subdivision 111 South Street.
God, if you want to pause one second, if people, if people want to, the rest of it is going to be, I hate to say it this way, but the rest of it's very, I don't know, procedural. You don't, you don't have to hang around, boring, thanks, oh bland, thanks Pete. Thanks Pete, that's lovely. I've only prepped, I've only prepped a whole week for this. I appreciate that. So if you want to skedaddle before we go on, that's good. If not, you're welcome to hang out.
No, you're good. I, I should have done the same thing. Me, I'm just looking at an agenda. I think you're right when that. Yeah. So are we going to call the meeting back to order? Dave, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is John Jacobs, subdivision 111 South Street. Patty?
Patty has another engagement, which is much, much more important than anything we're doing.
Yeah.
It's a personal trip she left, right? So we, we are still waiting for the DEC to do sign-off on the wetlands, so that's a punt.
All right, that's a punt till next month. The next up is Smiko Design, type plant 7179 Vineyard Avenue. These have also been, we're going to set a public hearing for next month.
Yep, my name is Sean Williams. I'm the architect for the project. We have nothing to add at this point. We discussed it all last week.
Okay.
We're hoping we can set up a hearing for next month.
That's what we're going to do. We're setting a hearing for next month. I didn't think there's any other issues.
Yeah, yeah, not since he just adjusted the size of the occupancy. You know, the assembly space down to below 100, no sprinkler required, so I think we're good to go.
Yeah, I think so too. We're good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing set for next month. Say again?
It is set or we have to set?
We have to set.
So we make a motion to public hearing next month, somebody. Second. Ball in favor. Thanks, thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. And one abstention. Thank you, Bill.
Who is the abstention?
Really? Public hearings is Ryan Marshallak, Lot Line Revision, 546 North Elting's Corner. The public hearing was scheduled, is scheduled for March 27, 2025, and thank you for coming up. It's an unlisted action and.
Scott?
Yes? I heard somebody.
Could you, before you open the public hearing, can we talk a little bit about the public comment that's been made about segmentation?
Okay. Can you help me out with what the, where the public comment came from?
A public comment came from a neighbor who is suggesting that because what is proposed is a, it's, it's a lot line. First of all, just contextually, this is a lot line change. It's not a re-subdivision. And it's actually a type-two action under seeker. So, but before you open the public hearing, one of the issues that's been raised by the neighbor is that essentially there's segmentation occurring here because the property will result in new road frontage and the lot that is owned by Ryan is susceptible to future development. Now, in the application, the applicant has indicated that all they're seeking at this point is road frontage. There is no proposal for future development of that lot. And, but I think it's appropriate before the board opens the public hearing to confirm that that is the case, that, and that any future development of that lot is only speculative at this point. Otherwise, there may be a seeker segmentation issue and the board may want to postpone doing anything further with the project until you have more detail about what is intended for the 68-acre parcel that will now have road frontage. Does that make sense?
But right now, the only thing we have in front of us is, is the lot line, right?
That's correct.
And Paul's suggesting the confirmation from the applicant.
So we need them, what, what are you here, so I'll ask you, what are you here for? Are, you know, do we have a full picture of what it is you're doing or are you doing, you tell me, I'm not going to put words in your mouth.
Applicant is just intending to enhance his property by having road frontage since it has no, no road frontage. And, you know, there's no, at this point, there's no plan for future development. He would like to build his own house on it and.
I think that's all you need to hear, Scott.
Ken, that's enough. All right, that's not, we haven't even opened the public hearing yet. Ken?
Excuse me?
No.
You, you all have a chance to be heard. Just for some background context, the, the applicant can currently not pull a building permit from me because he has no frontage on an approved state, county or town road per town law. He could have applied to the town board for an open development area. In this instance, there, he is benefiting and his neighbor is benefiting swapping a property so that he can pull a building permit at some point in the future. The last conversation I had with him, which was several, several months ago, maybe even a year and change ago, was that he wanted to put a house on this property, his own house. So that's my background on it.
Hey, Scott, just to provide advice to the board, based on what I just heard, there's no seeker segmentation occurring here. And you can proceed to open the public hearing if you'd like.
Okay. So. So now we know what your intention is of the property and we understand what's put forth in front of us in the application. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Ball in favor? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Thank you, and are there any opposed? Seeing none, public hearing's open.
Why don't we have the applicant clear the table so anybody who wants to speak to it?
I was going to say, thanks, Dave, you're like, if you guys could just sit back down in your seats and if there's anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak to it, they can speak into the microphone, state their name and their purpose. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Ken.
If you can speak into the microphone, sir, that would be great.
My name's Ken Stenger. I think I've appeared in front of some of you folks before. I'm counsel to Mr. and Mrs. Richardson, who live next door. The. I apologize for speaking out of turn earlier. But I felt that without describing to you my issues or the issues that I would present for you to consider, that you would not fully understand why I've suggested that there might be, might be, I say, didn't write a letter saying absolutely, might be a segmentation issue here. But that's kind of a formalistic, procedural issue because there's a very substantive issue here. I, I don't come to these meetings without walking the land. So I did that tonight. And I'd like to, if I may, I have a drawing of an important feature of this land, which is a stream. The stream runs from my client's uphill behind his house, runs through his house, through his property line, crosses over into Mr. Ryan's property, crosses back. And, and it's vital to my clients, my client has what we would call a riparian right. We have a right to have the ability of that stream to drain our property forever. Those are rules that were established in the early 1800s.
Excuse me, Ken. Dave, can you load the wetland, the stream?
I can, I was going to pass out.
I've got it right here.
Oh, do you?
You can see it, but.
I think my, my, if I may.
Sure, sure.
Because I went up there. And you can see the stream.
Runs from the north to?
I think it runs, well, it runs from east to, I'm sorry, west, east or southeast. So if you look, you know where the area is where, where the exchange is to be made, right?
Thank you for your help on the map.
You know what, let me give you these drawings too, if I may. It just shows the area in a hash mark where the proposed exchange is going to take. So on this drawing, it shows you where the proposed exchange is going to take place. Which, what is marked in a red hash is the area that will be, is proposed to be conveyed to the applicant.
Thanks.
So, so. What we have here is a statement of the purpose of this application is to enhance the value of the applicant's property. And that is the only thing that's been stated tonight. And we, I don't begrudge anybody enhancing their, their property value, but I think we have to take note of the fact that the proposal of the exchange presents a 50-foot frontage, which would be the only path of access available to the development of the 68-acre, I thought it was 75-acre parcel behind it. There is an easement down the road or there is a driveway down the road, which is located just, if you look on, on this map, you can see this green stripe here. I walked that today too. That's a driveway, that's 15 feet wide, that can't really support more than one house. I don't know if your, if your zoning code allows more than one house on a driveway, but if, if it doesn't, it can only support one house. So I ask, there's a couple of things, I asked myself, what is the purpose of that exchange and the 50-foot wide 50-foot frontage? And what, what does that do? What benefit, what, what does that enhance us? Well, it enhances the owner the ability to put a driveway in there and build a house on that lot. It enhances the ability of the owner to get a building permit. Enhances the ability of the owner to create access from Elting's Road, Elting Corners Road, North Elting's Corner Road to the 68-acre parcel behind it. Now. There is an argument to be made, and I think I would urge you to consult with counsel under those circumstances that there, that this board may wish to say to this applicant, what exactly are your long-term plans here for this land? Will you in the future be seeking access to your balance of your holdings through this parcel? You don't have to have present or current plans to ask that question. In fact, the law is very clear on that. It don't have to come to you and say, now, this is my plan, I'm going to put 20 houses in there three years from now. Your board can take, when you consult with counsel, your board can look and say, all right, I've got the only 50-foot wide frontage on this road that benefits those 68 acres. Will that someday become developed in the back? Because there's nothing wrong with that. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that, but what the process requires is if that potential exists, that seeker, consider it now. If that potential exists. The, the test is whether or not the two uses are so separate that you consider them in the same application. And, and quite frankly, it doesn't require that somebody come in here with a developed set of plans and say, oh, look, we're going to put 25 houses in here. And when we really get past the legal formalities, there's only one or two real issues here that I would bring to you that I would ask that you do consider in the context of this application. Because I looked at this and I do a lot of development work, mainly I represent developers, but I always walk the land. And you, you're not going to have an issue here with traffic. You're not going to have an issue with. You're not gonna have an issue with uh, site distance on uh, North Elting's Corners Road. I walked it, it looks pretty good. But you're gonna have a real issue here, whether you put a driveway in place or a road with respect to the stream. I walked the stream tonight. And I, if, I'm gonna ask you, if you haven't walked that stream. Uh, I'm gonna invite you to come look at it. So you will see the same things that I saw. The stream originates up in the rear of my client's uh, yard. And when he first initially purchased it thirty-five years ago, there was a pond up there. And that pond has generally filled. I didn't walk all the way up the top of the mountain to find out where the stream came from, but I can tell you that the stream was running very healthily today. And I can report to you that that stream carries water. Ten out of twelve months, maybe July, August, when it gets really hot, it doesn't. If that stream, and that stream creates a right in my client because he's allowed, he's entitled to make sure that his water. The water that would otherwise flood his property continues to go in that stream bed. And go down and into the culvert and under the road as it presently does. Now, if you're going to, so that sounds, in abstract, that sounds real easy to figure out, but not when you walk it. When you walk it, you see the slopes involving the stream bed. You see where, how to build a driveway, forget a road, how to build a driveway would require to put in. Uh, buttressing structures to prevent collapse of the stream bed walls into the stream. You see the topo. You see the difficulty of whether you put a fifteen-foot driveway in there or a twenty-five-foot wide road as to how do you protect that stream? Now, I, I don't come here to say to anybody how to protect that stream. I come here to ask you to go out and look at it and see my client's concern. Because we're not opposed to this project. We're not opposed to someone building a house on the hill or building three houses on the hill. We have a very narrow, narrow focus here. The stream needs to be preserved. And, and that, whether, I, I get the segmentation thing, I, I really, quite frankly. As a developer's attorney, I'm like, oh, come on, are you kidding me? So. I don't even like the word segmentation. I do like the word, the stream, and I do ask you to come out and take a look at it. And when, because here's the issue. I think that when I walked it, the only thing I saw was that you could get a fifty-foot. You need a fifty-foot frontage to get a building permit. So. Now, that's not always true. There is that driveway that services. If you look on that, on this uh. Hash mark, you see that green line? There's a driveway there. I walked it today, it's fifteen feet wide. Uh, it doesn't have the cutouts that you would expect to see in the town of Lloyd because I know I'm familiar with those cutouts. I mean, turnouts, not cutouts. Um, I have no idea where it goes to, or I did see a foundation, so I assume that house is going to be the subject of a building permit. I don't know if that parcel has frontage. But I do know that. To grant, like, if the purpose of this. Conveyance is to assure that you can get a building permit. For the holdings that will now enjoy that frontage. That that is not the only way you can do that. You can do that by going to the ZBA and asking for relief from the fifty-foot frontage requirement. And if, and what is the uncertain part of this application, which is why I have argued that segmentation. Is a possibility here if you don't look at all of it. Is what happens to that stream? What protection, something will happen in that fifty-foot strip, we know that. What protections, because the develop, because the applicant hasn't told you what's going to happen, you have to consider what can happen. Because we ask that you take into consideration that stream and protect it. No matter what, if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna segment, I, I, if, if segmentation is a step too far for this board. Okay. The main thing here though, we know we can come back later if there's ever a development plan, we know that. But what do, what can we do about the stream now? To protect it in the context of this application? Can you, first of all, can you appreciate what it's like if you don't go and see it? So I repeat. We would invite you and we'd ask you to adjourn this meeting tonight. And we would ask you to tell us when it's convenient for the members of the board to come out and I would come with you. And, and certainly the applicant can be, everybody should be there to go look at this together. It's a very unique property and it's got some very interesting features. I think if you were going to build a road in there, you'd have a huge problem. I think you might have a similar problem with the building of a driveway. Now. The other thing I, so I'd like you to come out and I'd ask you please to come out and look at that.
So if I can be clear, you need to tell me what you're here for. Is it segmentation or the stream?
I, I.
Because your argument was segmentation and right now I'm looking at, at what I'm gonna call a lot line revision. And um, nothing else is before me to say whether or not that stream's going to be um, changed in any way.
It, the point, well then let's just call it segmentation because the point is that at some point, this fifty-foot wide strip will be improved by some means of ingress or egress. I think that's a logical conclusion. Where it's gonna go and how many houses is gonna, how many houses are going to be, be serviced by it, I can't say, I don't know.
But he needs the fifty-foot ac- access in order to gain the property, to gain to the property? He needs it. So that's my, my, my thing, that we don't know what else he's going to do after that, so we can't even. If we're gonna say segmentation, he could be coming in here saying, look, we, at some point, we want to do fifty houses and a store, but um.
I can.
That to me is us approving it today and him saying what he's gonna do later, but we don't really know what he's doing later.
Well, I, I, I gather that. And it, 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 if I was going to stick on the segmentation argument, I would say to you that you have an obligation to ask him what he's gonna do with it. But I wanted to make things a little.
Which we did and he made that clear, just to keep this so it's.
No, he made it clear, he, he has no present plans. The lack of present plans doesn't address the segmentation issue, but I wanted to make it simple.
Yeah, yes, it does.
I just.
And we, we can, I'm sorry, we can keep going through this all night. Um, but the bottom line is what the chairman just suggested. The planning board is looking at a lot line change here. There is no plans for future development. That are anything other than speculative at this point. So there is no seeker segmentation issue presented. Accordingly, I advise the planning board, they could go ahead and open the, the public hearing. Because if there were any issues related to that, they, they would have to postpone. Any public hearing on the matter. In front of them tonight is a lot line change proposal that will have no effect whatsoever on the stream. Any future development proposal, subdivision proposal or whatever. That is brought to the planning board for review. Will also be subject to seeker review at that point in time. If there are any potential impacts on the stream or other resources. Or anything else, that will be, be appropriately within the purview of the uh, planning board to consider. But for tonight's purposes, they are simply looking at a lot line change on a map. That is proposed for two purposes. One, to give one of the applicants additional land for their backyard. And the other to provide to Ryan. The opportunity for road frontage that may or may not be uh, appropriate for future development. And may or may not have seeker impacts that the planning board may consider in the future. So I think that's where we're at and I'm not sure that uh, there's anything to be served by continuing to. Uh, talk about the stream or to ask the planning board to postpone its consideration. Of a lot line revision, uh, so that they can come out and look at a stream which may never be affected by any future development.
So, and, and if I could, for all your puzzled looks out there that I have right now, the voice is not coming from way above, it's coming from Zoom. And that would be our land use attorney, Paul Van Cott. Um, sorry, we had to make that introduction. There's Paul right there.
Hello, Paul, how are you?
Sorry about that, because I saw a lot of puzzled looks out there.
I will accept.
Yeah, I got it.
I, I, I.
You're muted, Paul.
I can close my comments fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry about that, Ken.
Paul, I, I'm so sorry, I.
Yeah.
I did, so here's the last piece of this. I, I think what Paul is sa- saying is, is accurate. Um, you know, if, if, if there is a development plan, these issues will be revisited.
Yes.
But, but I ask you this. What if there's a driveway permit? Application.
Is there one?
What, if there ever is one, it won't come back here. And it should be resolved bef- that issue, I do agree with, with what Paul has said. If there's a plan for development, there's a second bite of this apple. I don't necessarily uh, give up on the argument of the segmentation, but I respect. The advice you received and I'm not going to continue that argument. But I think the advice you're receiving is based on. The assumption that any further development to this property is going to come back here in front of you and that you will exercise your responsibilities at that point. If somebody walks, if there is an application for a driveway permit, which will affect that stream, it won't come back here. It comes to me.
Yeah.
It comes, it comes to me.
That's fine.
It passes through the highway superintendent and the fire chief. We have, we have a, um, a new application. That both the highway superintendent and the fire chief, um, both approve the plans and then approve the, the um, end result. Uh, and if one of those signatures on either the part A or part B is not in place, um, the driveway is unusable. And I have the um. Lucky me, I have the authority to enforce that. So, um, yeah, um, so, and if there is a question. Um, of culverts or stream damage or anything, um, I drag Andy kicking and screaming into the equation. Uh, which we've done in the past, just north of this property, um, on a, on a Fort Lot subdivision. That Charlie, you were involved with actually on the site, uh, and digging out all that and the, you know, controlling stormwater and, and all that other fun stuff. So, yeah, it comes to me and. You know, I manage that piece.
Again, most of this is a hypothetical at this point for what we're reviewing. I can't, I can't speculate what somebody's going to do later on, I don't know, come back before us, we'll review it. You're more than welcome. If you feel at that point that there's an issue, come back in and talk to us, tell us what you feel. But right now, by knowing what I'm dealing with as far as a lot line revision, that's all I can see in front of me. I'm not a wizard, I can't say anything different.
Right, they, they are constrained to a certain extent here, Ken, as you will appreciate.
No, I, I, I do, Paul, I mean, I do, I, my, my major concern is I'm just trying to figure out a way to protect. That stream from future impacts that I think you could do.
Is it a D E C regulated stream, Ken, do you know?
No, it's not. It is a stream though that provides drainage to, for my client's property and that without that stream functioning. My client's property will flood.
Right.
And I, I, I'm just talking to Paul because he's not here, but.
Right. So, um, that being said, go ahead, Dave. Dave, does the um, the new regs with the D E C do anything here?
Nope. No, it says not a regulated, as, as, as.
Kind of, as accurately pointed out, this is not a regulated stream, although it does uh, discharge um, to a class uh, two stream. Um, so there are, you know, certain things that we're not allowed to do with it. Um, as Ken knows um, well, and my office has. Again, unfortunately, um, some experience with, uh, it is against the law to interrupt the natural flow of water. Um, and we, um, we have some enforcement, you know, experience doing that, uh, in other locations, uh, one was on Bellevue. Um, not, not so very long ago. Uh, it's against the law to interrupt the natural flow of water and we do our piece to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, alright, well.
But, but I'm gonna offer a suggestion and I'll shut up.
Okay.
So I, I bet you never heard a lawyer say that.
No, I haven't.
Yeah.
At least I didn't think I was gonna hear him say.
Yeah, no one's ever heard me say it either. But Paul, what do you think about the idea that we could put a condition on this that? Any future, any future activity on this. Uh. Parcel will not interrupt the flow of water. And then for once and for all, it's done.
Uh, I'm not sure if that's an appropriate subdivision condition. Uh, based on what we know at this time.
Okay, okay. Well, I suggest it as a way.
It's worth a shot, I, I, I hear you. Um, and it's not at all to diminish the um, concerns of your clients. I think the town will do everything it can to uh, you know, protect the. Uh, environment and the resources that are involved, uh, based on whatever its authority is to uh, affect that.
Alright, gentlemen.
Well, I appreciate your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
For hearing, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Alright guys, good, nice to hear from you, Paul.
Hold on, you get the. Give Ken a second to vacate.
Okay. My counsel has advised, you may not participate.
There you go. Is there anyone else? Seeing none?
Motion to close?
I didn't get there, but yeah, thanks Brett. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Can I have a second? That, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, any abstentions? Go ahead, Bill.
Obstaining.
Thank you. And um, Paul, do you want to try this resolution? I think Paul quit.
I think he posted. He's watching basketball.
Really? Paul, you on?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Yep, I just gotta nudge you a little bit.
That's alright, let's see here.
You want to do this uh, resolution for me?
Yes, sir. Pulling it up. Okay.
You want me, you want me to do it? Yeah.
I apologize. Just trying.
I'm gonna go with the last whereas if I could, right from there. The planning board opened a public hearing on project, on the project on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five and closed a public hearing. On the same date after considering all the materials submitted by the applicant and receiving input from the public. Now therefore it for be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant's approval of the re-subdivision application pursuant to the town of Lloyd Zone Code. Chapter ninety in town law, town, I'm sorry, and New York State Town Law. Two seventy-six and the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the approved subdivision plat for the project upon payments of fees. Including but not limited to the recreation and escrow fees owed to the town of Lloyd. And be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court of competent jurisdiction. The remainder shall continue to be in full force and effect. And be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed in the office of the town of Lloyd Town Clerk. And a copy shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Can I have a motion to accept the uh, resolution as read?
Motion.
Second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? You're good, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
You thank her. Um, next on the public hearings is Heavenly Heart Pet cremation site plan thirty-five twenty-five and thirty-five twenty-three Route nine W. The public hearing is scheduled for tonight, type two seeker and I'm gonna let you speak and then I'm gonna have. The rest of the uh, staff speak. So, to your application, sir? Want me to go off? I'll, I'll do it, I'll start. So there were some issues here that needed, still needed to be resolved, am I correct? So, there's a few. Just say at least.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of issues. Um, you know, there's, there's a few drawing issues, we. You know, we have some, we're waiting for uh, response on the wetland jurisdictional determination. Um, that. Um, the, the topography shown on the plans is a there, there's some slopes that are shown that aren't really, um, traversable by a vehicle, um, and we can't, it's hard to tell that the way the drawing is proposed, prepared, the what, what's proposed and what's existing, if there's great changes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're missing some erosion semi-control, um, plans, details. So, uh, you know, I, I, I do think that, you know, we could probably work with the applicant, um, to address these issues, if you, if you wanted to make them conditions, it's up, it's up to you.
What is the period of time we're waiting on some of this stuff, is it gonna be a while, or would you guess?
Well, yeah, I mean, it could be a while, especially the, especially the wetlands J D, it could be, take some time.
I think we should wait on this point, I think, you know, I know we have everything in front of us, but I think we wait another month to let you get all these, um, general comments answered and supporting with everything we need for the resolution to be complete, if that's alright.
Okay, I, I can speak a, a little bit to the J D unofficially, um, I've been in conversation with, um, some folks up in Albany, um, they're, they're trying to move through stuff, they, they did, uh, communicate that they would take a look at it, but that the answers have to be given in order that they receive applications, so, I, I did get ahold of somebody who was willing to look it over. Um, their thought was that it would ultimately, um, fall under their jurisdiction as a wetland.
But if I don't mind, we really can't make a determination without that.
Well, we could do lots of other things, but the J D is specific to them. The hiccup for the J D process is if they assign buffers, the buffers are linear, um, not topo-driven, so, um, but my sense is, he'll be outside of where the wetlands are currently mapped informationally, uh, with, with, you know, the things he's doing, um, that, my sense is, it'll, it'll probably be okay, but I wouldn't want to speak for the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's too, it's hinging on too much for us, for me anyways, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but. So, yeah, general consensus would be to wait, so we'll keep the public hearing open for a little bit, and I'll ask the public too, if they have anything to comment on it, but I appreciate your efforts in trying to get it, but come with a complete package, so that we know the next time what we're looking at, we're, you know, we've got this, we're, you know, we want to be a hundred percent on it, and make sure that we're good, alright?
Okay, um, so it's the, the drawing issues, and, but really, it's the J D that's the, the.
The J D, we'd also asked about the, the, the condition of the septic system, so, um, you know, if you can get, you know, your, your engineer to, to take a look at that and let us know that it's okay, I mean, I'm assuming that the flows out of this, this building are gonna be less than what was previously proposed, so.
It was a house at one point.
Yeah, it's probably a flying, but.
I mean, if it was me, I'd put an open pipe to that ditch out there. The D E C would go nuts.
So, yeah, just a couple, I, I mean, I, I actually don't think that a lot of these comments will be difficult for your, for you to address, um, aside from the J D.
So wait, we're gonna ask, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the project? Oh, I'm sorry, I can have a motion to open the public hearing, I apologize.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? And Bill, you're abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Yes, now, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf of the project? Sure, why don't you come on up here and state your name?
My name is Bruce Ekerson, I live at three fourteen Bellevue Road. The site is located in the G B General Business District, it is located immediately north of the Highland Elementary School. The proposed new facility is about one hundred feet north of the elementary school, the elementary school does not have central air conditioning, it relies principally upon open windows in the spring and the fall. The proposed use is a biomass incinerator for animal carcasses, both defunary cremation of individual dogs and cats, and the bulk sanitary disposal of batches of small animals for veterinarians, animal shelters, universities, and other clinics, you will notice on the site plan that there is no retail space allocated for the sale of, say, caskets, headstones, urns, or other retail funary items, just a small office space, a, uh, restroom, and, uh, a work area for storage and the placement of the incinerators, indicating that much of the business will be in the bulk disposal of services to veterinarians and humane societies. The incinerators sold in the United States, as opposed to Europe, are generally dual-mode in anticipation of such service. A modest-sized unit can cremate an eleven-pound cat in about a half an hour, or a forty-two-pound dog in an hour for individual service. But then bulk mode, they can accept a loading of between five hundred and a thousand pounds, which is only about eight to sixteen cubic feet. These larger loads require between three and four hours to process at two hundred to two hundred and fifty pounds per hour. Thus, such a facility can easily process overnight three to five thousand pounds of animal remains. They are stored at individual veterinarians' offices and refrigerators, transported to the site, incinerated, and the ashes from the individual cremains are then returned to their source, or for bulk cremations are given to, oh, if individual cremations are returned back to the veterinarians, in the case of bulk sanitary disposal, then they're simply transported to a, a landfill. However, the process is not a clean one, according to a twenty twenty EPA report, one ton of animal incineration, on the average of about seventy-five animals, or about thirty-two cubic feet, generates three point six pounds of nitrogen oxide, three point one pounds of P M ten particulates, two point nine pounds of carbon monoxide, two point two pounds of sulfur dioxide, point three pounds of volatile organic compounds, three point nine grams of hydrogen fluoride, one point three grams of cadmium, point two grams of arsenic, point one grams of formaldehyde, point oh six grams of mercury, point four grams of napthaline, point two grams of selenium, along with measurable amounts of beryllium, cadmium, chromium, cobalt, fluorine, nickel, hydrogen chloride, hydrogen fluoride, and selenium. In addition, the process is not continuous. As I stated before, each bulk incinerator cycle requires up to four hours to process. Because the animals are refrigerated at the veterinarians or humane society, there is no provision for refrigerated onsite, as indicated on the site plan. Thus, in the event of an unexpected peak load, or the breakdown of an incinerator unit, or even the shutdown for normal maintenance, it would not be surprising to see two or more tons of dead, unrefrigerated animals piling up onsite. And again, let me repeat, this site is immediately adjacent to our elementary school, and about one hundred feet physically between the two buildings. New York D O T policy and standards requires that driveway permits for new commercial drives opening onto state highways after September first two seventeen meet current standards. According to, uh, aerial photos from Ulster County and private Esperian aerial photos, the site has been inactive for a period that began sometime between twenty oh nine and twenty thirteen. Thus, according to this source, this site has been inactive since before the current D O T standards came into force. Thus, this is not the reuse of a currently existing site, it is a new driveway cut. A commercial driveway at a state highway with a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit and a five percent heavy truck traffic requires an advanced site clearance of seven hundred and forty-five feet. The currently proposed driveway does not meet this standard. Thus, to meet New York D O T standards for a new driveway curb cut, it will be necessary for the applicant to construct dedicated right-in, right-out acceleration and decelerations at least two hundred and forty feet length, in length, in both the north and south directions from the driveway. By shifting the proposed drive slightly north, constructing the acceleration and deceleration lanes in both the right-of-way, then dedicating them to the D O T, this can be accomplished. Let me also add that the applicant has recently taken out a five-year lease on the land in the D O T right-of-way for their septic tank field. So again, this is a physically possible correction. If D O T does not wish to accept the dedication, then access will have to be secured to and from elementary school drive, but I don't think this is possible, again, because of the recent lease between D O T and the landowner for the septic tank field. Finally, I have to ask the question, why are we discussing this application tonight in the context of the site plan application? Site plan approval is the last step before building permit plans are submitted. Once this permit, this site plan permit is signed off on, it's ready for the building permit phase, it's ready to exit the zoning permit process entirely. This application is not eligible for site plan approval, because the proposed use is not permitted in the zoning district. It is not permitted in any zoning district. Incinerators, biomass incinerators, or crematories do not appear anywhere in the zoning matrix for the time, for the, uh, for the town in the zoning use table. The zoning code makes clear that un, unlisted uses, according to the zoning code, are expressly prohibited. There's only two possibilities. The first is, this is a prohibited use, it simply can't even be considered for a site plan approval. The second possibility is that your staff has determined that this actually fits into one of the described uses in the zoning table. So I would ask you, Mr. McCarthy, which of these have occurred? Is this a absolutely prohibited use? Or has your staff determined that this is a use that fits into one of the either permitted or permitted by site plan approval uses that is listed in the zoning table?
Well, as I said before, it's not an open session where I'm gonna answer any of your questions. I'm sure that anybody, our attorney would have been able to answer many of the questions that you threw out, but we're not doing a discussion.
Has, has staff made any determination as to what use this falls into, a pure factual question?
Okay, what's on the application, what do we have? That's a good point, that's a good point, we're good, okay, will you ask questions?
Then, this public hearing has no meaning, this is an absolutely prohibited use in the Town of Lloyd. It cannot be considered a service business. The American Planning Association defines a service establishment as one whose primary activity is the provision of assistance as opposed to products to individuals. If you look at your site plan, as I stated before, what you see is an office, a staff restroom, and a work area, there is no sales area, no chapel, no provision for retail sales. The services are provided by the veterinarians to their clients, to individual pet owners. This site provides for the incineration process to support the retail service of the vets. If we look at the A P A's definition of, uh, a recommended definition of an industrial service, they describe that as establishments providing a series of continuous actions that changes one or more raw materials into a finished product through manufacturing, fabrication, processing, reduction or destruction of a substance, article, or commodity, or any treatment thereof in such a manner as to change its forms, character, or appearance. Now, this is a, a.
He's still explaining, we can, I, how much further do you have?
About one minute. Because the proposed use, be it a crematory or a bio-waste incinerator, is nowhere listed on the use table, it has not been contemplated under the town's comprehensive plan, and thus the application is not eligible for a use variance that would incorporate it. A legislative change in the form of an amendment to the zoning code is necessary. That's the procedure that was done when the town decided to incorporate short-term rentals into the zoning code. Two years later, from twenty twenty-two into twenty twenty-four, when it then expanded that into the C B and G B, it again legislatively, through the town board, expanded it then. There is no possible variance, there is no way to include it. It's simply flat a prohibited use, it's not even eligible for consideration as a site plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the project?
I think going forward, we should let know they got three to five minutes.
Well, I said that in the beginning, it got a little carried away. Sorry. Thank you.
So we're gonna push it off, the next month.
Yes, it's pushed off till next month. So that's where we are with that one, that one goes to next month, Sarah, thank you. Next on the agenda is Taripin, he's gone LLC, special use permit, one thirty-four Vineyard Avenue. Uh, the public hearing scheduled for March twenty-seventh, uh, tonight, type two seeker action, and come up and speak to your project.
Hello, I'm Sean Williams, I'm the architect, and we have with us the owner today.
Great.
Hi, I'm Ray Shulkey, I'm the owner, property.
Pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
So you're, this is the property, the garage?
Wanna describe your vision?
Uh, sure, um, the, the plan was to, to kind of breathe new life into the property, I've been trying to do that for quite some time, finally convinced the owner, previous owner, to sell it to me.
Right.
Um, moving my, my company, uh, really into the, the big building, the bigger building. And, and doing so, and doing renovation work, um, was approached by a couple of architects, um, who were looking for some nice space, and I said, you know, we came to terms pretty much, and accommodated them, and just this week, we had water sewer put in by Adam and team, um, so we're moving forward.
Very good.
Thank you.
So we are here to consider building one, uh, applying for, uh, use permits.
Yeah.
Um, for three commercial spaces above, and then an undescribed, an unknown retail space on the first floor. So that's where we stand today.
Alright, staff, anything?
Um, you know, most of our comments have been addressed, um, little surprised to hear the work is being done, um, prior to site plan approval.
Right.
Um, wonder if the sewer and water department is aware of the work that's been.
We pulled the permit.
Oh, good point. It's an existing building.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, we have a few, I think, it looks like most of our comments have been addressed, as far as staff's concerned.
Okay, this, then we'll have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Searing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Thank you. That's Bill, alright, yes, please, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the project? Please come on up and state your name.
Uh, I'm Angela Potenza, so I'm over at one twenty-nine Vineyard Ave, so I'm pretty much across the street. Uh, we, me and my family use the sidewalk a lot to get to town. Um, so it's pretty upsetting that there's like already, you know, water lines and sewer stuff being taken care of when it's extremely dangerous to get past this building. I think you guys all know what I'm talking about, I mean, you can fall right off the sidewalk, roll down a bank, you're in moving water, there's glass there, there's rocks, there's branches, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous, so I think that that's, number one, needs to be addressed as soon as this property switched hands. Uh, number two is an, another safety issue. The, um, the Talk-Tilson Vineyard intersection in this past year has become increasingly dangerous, I mean, it's really, really bad. I work full-time, so I'm out of the house forty, fifty hours a week, and I would say at least once a month I witness an accident, so there's gotta be way more than that. Um, so I don't know, I haven't looked at these plans before, I don't know what their idea is of how many parking spots, but people can't be coming in and out on Vineyard Ave right there, it's really, really bad. Um, people fly down that street going fifty miles an hour, I mean, you, you can't have, and there's too many blind spots right there, and then if you're, you know, I'm, I'm, love the idea of this whole place being, you know, taken over, have retail space, whatever they want to do with it, I think it's great, but you, you can't have the access there, somebody's gonna really get, get hurt.
If I can just address your concern on that, because it's very important, it's a safety issue, there's no access going out that way, no entrance, none coming in.
Okay.
Just so you, so you know, it's.
Uh, babe, relieved, yes, okay, thank you, no, that was it.
I, I just wanted to help you out with that concern.
Okay, cuz I was.
But I do, I do implore you to talk to Dave and see if you can look at the drawings, and see what it's, how it's being developed and what's happening, you can see the parking spaces and all that, so that's everybody here. Dave has offered that, reach out to him, he's got all that information you need. And this way, when you're, so when you come up before that, you already know what's happening and, but your concerns were already addressed on our end of it for the last couple of weeks or months, I should say, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, yeah, thank you so much, you guys.
Sure. Anyone else?
Come on up. You want to come up and speak? That's, that's what you get, though, when you want to talk. We get to see you. Now, come to the meetings. We want you to come.
As you know, we have experienced the, it's an avenue, Vineyard Avenue intersection for the last, how many years? We've had seven accidents there in less than a year. When it was a lumberyard, there wasn't as much traffic. They came in and out. Hardly anybody came down Linwood. Now, we not only have people who are taking our road, turning around and whizzing back up because they didn't get down to Vineyard Avenue or they didn't go to Smith Terrace on the other side. We have a lot of children now up on Smith Terrace, families, families with children, as I said, and dogs, constantly coming down to the rail trail. If you're even considering, which I hope you're not, letting people go in and out from Linwood Avenue, it would be a big mistake. It's just, it's too small a road. We do have children on the road. We all have dogs now. It's... I'm really happy to see Ray come and clean up the lumberyard and do something successful with it. So something has to be done to improve the situation. And if you come, I spoke to the police a couple of years ago about the traffic and how fast it is. Sundays, we, if we're sitting out on our porch, the cars just zoom from the village. And of course, the guys that have all of the zoom zooms to them just put it as loud as they possibly can. I hate to say we have too many people in Highland. I've lived here all my life, and I see it go very far away from a small town. That's not what we want, I guess. The village is thriving with every nationality going, which is very good. But it's just going too fast. And listening to the 9W Louis Smith's garage, the Smith's Chevrolet garage, and what they propose for it, my God, I just think of coming out on 9W. It's hard enough if you come over Van Wagner and try to get on 9W. And you can't go, you can't make a left, or you're not supposed to. I guess people are going through the fire station. But my God, just listening to this tonight, to have people coming out of those two apartment buildings straight onto 9W. It's absolutely ludicrous. It really is. And I think Van Wagner would suffer and is, they said, I'm trying to think of the name of the street they said was right behind there. It'll just destroy them. Because we've seen what's happened, has happened to our intersection. And as I said, there's been more accidents in what, nine months than there were in nine years. And we thought it was bad before. We have the closest driveway to that intersection. If you're coming, want to get in the driveway, you got to look, and you just hold your breath. Because people line up, it was supposed to be a sign put up. Do not block driveway. If I come, whether north or south, onto Tilson, try and get in our driveway, I hold my breath that somebody isn't going to crash into the back of me. And if I notice somebody's coming, I will go up to Linwood. And I shouldn't have to do this. I do have a right-of-way over the back property. But I don't like to invade, on my neighbor's property. The only alternative I have unless I want to get slammed in the back. So as I said, I'm really happy for what Ray wants to do. I hope you'll work with him. But, and of course, if the state doesn't fix the sidewalks or the road, it's going to collapse anyway. I'm Sandy and Irene. So that's my story. There's probably a lot more I'd like to tell, but I won't.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf or against the project? Nancy, where's your microphone?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, no, I'm Gail's daughter. Yeah, no, we're very excited for Vintage Village, but we just are worried about traffic down the...
Yep.
Or you're saying that absolutely no traffic is going to come in off that vineyard. But at one time it did. But I can't, I couldn't even fathom you're going to get, someone's just going to plow right into the back of you if you were to turn left. You really, you really need speed bumps on that road. You do, because it's insane. It really is. And I'm tired of every evening, sitting down, and all of a sudden we hear a crash. And for seven accidents to happen since this intersection went in, and all the aggravation that we endured. And I own a business right in the middle of all that for one year, what I had to deal with. It's just insane. Listening to all that construction and, and what's, what's happened to us. I mean, it's just terrible.
Just for reassurance. Yeah, I hope so. There are only four units going into that back building that's closest to where you have your right-of-way, the quest of the back. There are two offices. There's some warehouse space that Ray will use for his business, which is sound stuff. And then this... Exactly. And neither do they. I mean, we would, I think the board would embrace the bridge if it was in good shape. You know how the sidewalks are. The bridges was impacted as well, as was the house. So we didn't want people to, you know... If the DOT says go, and the DOT, I don't know if you know them, are a pain. Yeah, I know you do. So, yeah, so I mean, just getting them, I mean, you talked to the supervisor, just getting them to even talk about doing the sidewalks is a nightmare. Comments? No, they're all being recorded. Yeah, they're all being recorded. Got it? Great.
Okay. So if we could, thank you for your comments and your concerns. I'm sure the applicant will address them. Is there somebody else who would like to speak? Go ahead. You can ask, you asked a question, but you may not get an answer. But yes, go ahead, ask it.
Hi, Eric Hazelton, 129 Vineyard. Is this the only time to have a public comment on this? Because it sounds like there's just a bunch of units, like things happening in there. I'm just curious.
There's really not a lot happening in there.
Okay.
And this has been before this board three times?
Okay, well, I just got one letter the other day. So I just, I just want to say I support, you know, what all the residents and my wife said about safety, intersection, excited to see some new things happening over there.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that sidewalk, I mean, it's whatever, you know, if you need letters of support or a way that other community members can talk about that sidewalk. I have a child that won't stop moving, and he's going to want to run out of the house any day now. And he, you know, he's, he's running and stuff like, I'm scared for him to be on that road.
Yeah.
The way it is. And, you know, we want to enjoy the community walking to him all the time. That sidewalk needs to be addressed.
Supervisor's back there about sidewalks. You might want to talk to him. And at his meeting...
Hey, Dave.
Only at his meeting, though, if you don't mind, because it could drag on all night. But we do understand your concerns there, so...
Yeah. And thank you.
And again, I make say this to the public, too. This has been before us numerous times in the last few months. So this is, and we do have public hearings to where you're able to speak. But if you guys come to the meetings, you could see how we've developed to where we are today. Okay? That's fair. It didn't just happen. Today, we're not just, all of a sudden got this, and we're deciding what to do. This has been stretched out, considered, concerns, engineers have been involved. Architects have described exactly what the project was. And we've got a pretty good grip on making sure that the concerns that we would have that don't meet the law, mind you who we are. If it doesn't meet the law, then we can say, hey, fix that, mitigate those problems. But if it's passing and it's doing everything that needs to be done by code, we have to embrace what they have there, too.
Yeah, no complaints to that, just, you know, one letter. So I'm here, but, you know, it's all, all the information I have, so...
I appreciate it.
But thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your help and your concerns. Okay? So is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. All right.
I just have one more thing to add. The one comment that we do have remaining is, is some information on how they're proposing to close the bridge, what they're proposing to do, if it's...
Concrete barricade.
What they're going to do, if it's going to be a barricade, if it's going to be a chain, what they're going to, what they're going to do.
We can have them speak to that now and know that. Because, but what is your intention? What's the owner's?
A fluorescent chain. So when people like me pull into it, they don't hit the chain.
Yeah, it needs to be...
Well, I thought, actually, honestly, I thought the same thing, is a Jersey barrier or something. If you can even leave it there, I don't know if the town will let you do that, but...
Jersey barrier, chain link fence, gate.
Gate, bright yellow gate.
I mean, chains, somebody can fall over, trip over, end up in the street. Gate.
Dave, what do you got?
Six foot high. Let's see.
We're thinking any, like a steel gate, something like that, maybe. It's, yeah, I mean, propose something to Dave that he would accept on his, if we go in there and change it, right?
You can't break the chain, ugly looking chain link fence.
No, I agree. I, I don't think just a chain link fence would fit. You know, something that you can, somebody think, you know what, I'm here a long time, too. As a kid, and I remember turning into that for the lumberyard.
Yeah.
And not that anybody's been able to do it in many, many years. But you know what? I'm getting older, and I forget, so I might still turn in there for some reason. You, you got something to say? You could do it in a public hearing, like...
Just in case anybody doesn't know who I am, I'm running on. The only thing I would say about a fence or whatever, they've done such a nice job cleaning that place up. I'd hate to see them gate something over so you couldn't look up in there.
That's why I was saying, suggesting like that steel, you know, the steel gate that can be swing, easily swung into the property. You know, bright yellow, though, so people could see it. I, it's my opinion. Safety yellow is what I'm...
You'll never turn in that.
Huh?
You'll never turn in, you see that color.
I would never turn it, right? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Very good. But anyway, so let's, so did I get a second on the motion? I did? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul, are you on?
Yes, we have a draft resolution for you. Shall I read the resolve clauses?
Yes, please.
Now, therefore be it resolved that based on the application, the findings herein, pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby approves a special use permit for the project. Be it further resolved that the, this approval shall expire if the special, special use approved hereby expires for more than 12 months for any reason. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court, the remainder shall stay in effect. Be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk, and a copy shall also be transmitted to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
So can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So this resolution is, or motion is passed. Thank you. And thanks for making it going to look a lot better. It's definitely needed. The next one is Peter Morendo.
He's on Zoom.
Say again?
He's on Zoom. He was there most of the meeting. You think he's still there?
Yeah. So I'm here on behalf of the homeowner. I, my name is Ibrahim Ramadan of Evolution Energy. And forgive my ignorance for the past few meetings, my operations coordinator was present for the past few. So I'm jumping in now.
So it's a special use permit for these, was it the...
Brown Mount, yeah. So this was the one with the DEC. We got DEC sign off, so we were good to go for tonight, just public hearing and see what comes up.
Licensed electricians in the county?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sorry, special preference, I'm on the licensing board, so I got to make sure it does the right thing.
No worries.
Anything from staff?
Nothing on this.
Nothing? Every, open the show pretty much? Is there anyone from the pub, oh, I got to do it. Open the public hearing, motion, please? Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions, Bill?
Abstaining and recusing.
And recusing. Thank you, sir. Wow, you got double whammy on that one. Okay, anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? In Zoom land? None? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention? Thank you, Bill. So, Paul, here's another one we've got. Unless you want me to do it?
No, I got it. This is a seeker type-two action. The resolve clauses are as follows. Now, therefore be it resolved that based on the application and the findings herein, in pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby approves a special use permit for the project. Be it further resolved that this approval shall expire if the special, special use permit, special use approved hereby expires for more than 12 months for any reason. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. Be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with a clerk, and a copy shall also be transmitted to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I have a motion to accept the resolution as read. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention? Thank you, Bill.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are continued public hearings. We have the Vineyard Portfolio LLC, special use permit, 19 through 25 Vineyard Avenue. The public hearing was open on February 27, 2025, and the actions to be determined. So anybody here for that?
Zoom.
The man's on Zoom. Let's hear it. What do you got there, sir?
Coming again, trying to get the first floor, which used to be commercial, which we did the zoning change, and we turned it into residential, so trying to get it a special use permit.
The zoning change went in? Do you have anything from staff who wants to say anything to it?
No, I think most of our issues have been addressed here. There's, there's just a couple of drawings, issues to be resolved. I guess, is this the one, is this, Dave, is this one required sprinklers or not?
It has fire sprinklers.
Okay. And the water service, we think, is going to be able to accommodate that?
No, so we applied already for a permit with, to open up the road, and just, we're going to add a new two-inch service, additional two-inch service. So we're going to leave the existing service for the water, and we're going to add an additional two-inch service for the fire sprinklers.
Okay. All right.
Was this one of the ones where the fire department sent the letter on? I don't recall.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I wasn't sure what, what that letter was about. I tried contacting, I spoke to Dave, but I never, I never heard back.
You can explain it? You need more time to look into the project?
Yeah, the, the big thing is, we're going to make sure that the fire department connection is the appropriate mount, connection for what they use. So as we get into sprinkler design, we'll, we'll take care of it.
You're good with everything else on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. So, so, sir, this will be, I'm going to say, addressed through the planning board and the fire, I'm sorry, through the building department and the fire department. That's what that letter pretty much means there, if that's all right with you.
I mean, which, which we have submitted already plans for the fire sprinkler system to the building department.
Okay. Paul, do you have anything on this?
I, I don't.
Okay.
We do have a draft resolution for you, if you want.
Well, I want to see if there's anyone from the, this public is still, public meeting's still open.[1750.91] Is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak on behalf of it or against the project? Seeing none. I can actually, um, ask somebody to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Thanks.
Uh, Paul, this is Dave. Uh, since we don't have a resolution handy, is this something that we could sort of, um, um, sort of shoot from the hip on? Uh, he's been waiting a fair bit of time.
We have a public.
Oh, you do? I apologize. Nevermind.
Hey, Dave.
I'm ready. I told you, I should, I should have stayed home.
It's, so this, this is a type two action for seeker purposes. So you, you don't need to do anything further there. And I can read the now therefore, uh, provisions of the resolution if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant approval of its special use permit pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law. And the chairman is authorized to sign the approved site plan for the project upon payment of any fees, including but not limited to recreation and escrow fees owed to the town of Lloyd. And be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court of competent, uh, jurisdiction, the remainder shall, uh, stay in effect. Be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk and also mailed to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion to accept the, the resolution as read?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. You're, you're good. Thank you very much.
Appreciate.
Next on the agenda is three oh five Corp amended site plan, three thirty-five oh nine Route nine W. The public hearing is opened on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And, um, anyone here to speak to that project?
So, um, Patty, uh, was here and then had to go for, um, something more important than this. So, uh, not professional, personal. Um, I did speak, um, I did, she spoke to, um, the owner. I spoke to the owner and emailed back and forth. The owner has already put mufflers on the, on the.
Yeah.
Um, uh, vacuums.
Vacuums.
Um, that were sort of resistant. I am also still now more resistant to doing a timer on them. I just don't think that's gonna be the solution. However, the, um, at the last conversation, the property owner has, um, before Patty and I even mentioned it to him, he's gonna plant evergreens along, uh, the road there.
Yeah.
Um, to sort of block some of that noise. If you go to the site now, the top of the hill is, um, vegetated. Um, so those new evergreens will come sort of down the hill on the side. Um, uh, we all, I think, um, agreed at the last meeting, um, and some offline stuff, that the new use was probably not gonna impact the neighbors. Um, however, you know, because, because of who the family is, um, you know, they wanna be good neighbors. So that's why he's did all the other stuff on the complete opposite side of the site.
Okay. Well, there's not much more going on than that. You were good with everything. We were good with everything. So we could, um, ask someone to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Bill, thank you. And Paul?
We have it. Uh, again, this is a type two action under seeker. And the re- resolve clauses read, uh, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant approval of its site plan uh, pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law. And the chairman is authorized to sign the approved site plan for the project upon payment of any fees, including but not limited to recreation and escrow fees owed to the town of Lloyd. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, uh, the remainder shall stay in effect. And that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk and mailed to the applicant. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One abstention. The motion and the resolution has been passed. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Nie is not here under short-term rentals. I believe he didn't, um, satisfy our get it done before the next meeting comment. So we're gonna push him off to next month. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll see everybody next month. I'll be back. I'll be back next month.
Going forward, would you make that announcement about three to five minutes?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll do something in the future with a little timer.
I, I, one hundred percent like that. I gotta tell you, do it, please. I could use my clock or my phone or whatever.
You gotta stop.
I don't have, I don't.
You know what? There you go.
Where?
Just get a little egg timer.
Thank you.
That's it. That's right.
An egg timer. Tick, 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 tick. So there's that. And I gotta tell you, that last, that thirty-five oh nine, very nice job that they were able to help us.
Are we still live?
No, we're out now.
We're out.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Bill. Have a drink for me, Bill.
Stop recording. Stop recording.